That's what I really want to do. That's my dream.
Six o'clock, welcome to the York Street meeting in the dark of the night. Thank you for being here and calling me the order. If you will give your attention, the council member of honor, the president will give the invitation and say as you have able, when I can say it, for the time of the day.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I bring great pleasure in introducing this person today. He was a big part of my youth growing up. This is Pastor Delmar Allen White, who currently serves as a senior pastor of the new Mount Zion Missionary Baptist Church in Topeka, Kansas. Pastor White has over 41 years of experience in the preaching ministry and 39 years of service in pastoral ministry. He's been married to Carmen L. White for 40 years. They have three adult children, my good friend Courtney White, and his daughters Teandre Miller and Kimberly White. He has the distinct awards of being who's who among young gifted clergy. I don't know how long ago that young was, but... The MLK Citizen of the Year Award and the Department of Corrections Citizen of the Year Award for the state of Kansas. His community service includes being a former president and local chapter of the Topeka branch of the NAACP, Citizen Advisory Board for the Topeka Police Department, a board member for Boys and Girls Clubs of Topeka, and a chaplain for the Topeka Police Department. He has appointments on the Governor's Judicial Review Board, the Juvenile Justice Board, Community Corrections Council Board Member, Education Review Board Member for the state of Kansas, and was the board chair of the Entrepreneurial Minority Board Development. Again, it is my honor to introduce Pastor White.
Thank you. Oh God, we come before you with gratitude. We thank you for being a God of love who is with us now in this very room. You never leave us or forsake us. Your grace has brought us safe thus far, and your grace will lead us home, Lord. We thank you for making each of us in this room, every person we meet, every citizen of this city, in your own image, with dignity and infinite worth. We thank you for the calling you've given every one of us to be good stewards of your creation, to love our neighbors as ourselves. I thank you tonight, God, for these, your servants, our mayor, our city council, city staff, and our city council members. I give thanks for the way of service they've chosen to take up on behalf of all of us here. We all come to this room tonight as complex human beings, carrying burdens, carrying joy and hope, trusting that you alone can hold us together, oh God. In your love and peace, help us, oh Lord, to trust you more, more than our fears and our wounds and even our accomplishments. May we lean on your everlasting arms tonight. God, in your word, you make it clear, your expectations for those who sit in places of authority. In Psalm 72, we hear the prayer of the king. "Doubt the king with your justice, oh God, the royal son with your righteousness; may he judge your people in righteousness, your afflicted ones with justice; may he defend the afflicted among the people and save the children of the needy; may he crush the oppressor." For the king will deliver the needy who cry out, the afflicted who have no one to help. He will take pity on the weak and needy and save the needy from death. He will rescue them from oppression and violence, for precious is their blood in his sight. Finally, through the prophet Jeremiah in chapter 22, you remind us that your blessing came on kings who defended the rights of the poor and needy, because it isn't that what it means to know you. We remember the apostle Paul writing to the Christians in Rome and his teaching that those in authority are first and foremost your servants, that honoring you and doing your will is their highest purpose, that any portion of power they enjoy is given by you and can be taken away. And so we pray that you would be glorified tonight through the decisions of this city council. We pray that we would have eyes to see how our lives are all connected and how our common good is upheld when we listen and respond to those most vulnerable among us. We pray that your kingdom would come in this city as it is in heaven through your power working in each of these, your servants. May your truth be revealed; may your light shine brighter; may the voices of those who silenced be heard loud and clear. Defend their cause, oh God, through this governing body tonight. We thank you again for this council, our mayor, our first responders, our hospital staff, and all those who worked to make this place, this city, we call home, a wonderful city. In the name of him who died and yet rose again, we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Therein lies the problem with 30-foot...
Okay, let's go. We'll proceed with the agenda. First on the agenda is roll call. Madam Clerk?
Mayor Padilla.
Here.
Councilmembers Hiller.
Here.
Valdivia Akla.
Here.
Ortiz.
Here.
Banks.
Here.
Cal.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Dobler.
Here.
Duncan.
Here.
And Hofer.
Here.
We have 10 present.
Thank you. Move on to the second item on the agenda, presentations. Uh, Brenda?
The first presentation we have is the 2023 City of Topeka Fourth Quarter Financial Report, and Rochelle Matthews interim finance director will report.
Mr. City Manager?
Tonight, we have for you the 2023 Quarter Four Financial Report. So, we're going to kick off by doing a citywide overview, talk about some new items that have changed in this report since last year, along with a few 2023 highlights. Then we will move into the general fund overview, and then finally wrap up with the proposed 2023 surplus recommendations that are up in a different action item later tonight. I wouldn't be doing my job if I didn't disclose these are unaudited and preliminary figures and will not be final until we bring you the full 2023 audit later this year in June. A full copy of the report is presented in your packet, and if the public would like a copy, there is a full PDF at topeka.org/finance/financialreports. So when we talk about citywide funds, we're talking about all the funds combined across the city, from the general fund all the way to our capital funds. So on the revenue side, it performed favorably to budget in 2023, specifically with franchise fees and tax collections. Franchise fees exceeded their budget by $3.5 million, where sales tax collections were $3.9 million. So, for a little context, franchise fees include those taxes in electricity and gas. So, the increase in franchise fees was primarily driven by $2 million of the increase in natural gas franchise fees and $1.5 million in electric franchise fees, largely as a result of the rate increases that we saw those entities publish last year. Another thing that performed favorably was our intergovernmental revenue, which is where our American Rescue Plan Act revenue resides. As of our December 31st federal report, we have either spent or under commitment $40.1 million of the total $45.7 million federal award. So, as a reminder, this funding must be committed by the end of this year and fully spent by the end of 2026. So we are well on our way to meeting those benchmarks. In 2023, I think the total spending equated to about $15 million, but we're still finalizing that number. And as noted on the slide, the expenses can vary, and when you look at citywide, because not all funds have an operating budget, some items such as the capital project funds are given a budget by you all in the CIP process. Similarly, federal grant spending is awarded at the federal level, and it does not tie to a calendar year. So let's talk about some highlights. I wanted to cover some new things to the addition of this report. You will find a new page for our first reinvestment housing incentive district. As a reminder, we approved the East Gate RHID that is slated to add 23 duplexes for 46 new housing units for the city. We also established the no-tille business improvement district. So, we completed the first year of 2023 processing and are underway for 2024. Another interesting accounting item I'd like to point out is to really highlight the work that is done by our public works and utility staff. So, when we send them out with projects and money, they turn it into stuff and buildings and roads. So, we added just over $48 million of assets to our balance sheet because of their hard work. That's 120 new assets. For utilities, that's 20 storm water, 38 water pollution control improvements, and 30 water improvements. Governmental largely equates to public works, so that is 62 new assets for the $15 million of added to our balance sheet. So, now on to the general fund. We saw very similar trends in the general fund as we did in the citywide statements, that franchise fees and sales tax collections performed favorably in 2023 to their budget. So franchise fees, again, were the $3.5 million favorable to budget and sales tax collections, and the general fund specifically were favorably $3.2 million to budget. We also saw better-than-expected returns on our investment portfolio. That's largely due to the market rates came up from their '21 and '22 rates. And then, for our total general fund budget, we came in right on target for our general fund budgets for 2023. And as I stated before, this is a preview of the item we'll be discussing later for the use of the 2023 revenue surplus. This table here shows you the $8.6 million in proposed projects. These projects focus on one-time capital expenditures that could be cash-funded to avoid debt, projects identified by the Public Health and Safety Committee previously, and then transfers to our insurance risk funds based on the insurance changes we had for 2023. These would all be transfers out of the general fund and would not impact the total budget number previously referenced. So with that, I would stand with any questions.
Thank you, Rochelle. Any questions in the body? Councilman Dodger?
Thank you, Mayor. So what does this represent, excuse me, in terms of general fund, a percentage of general fund reserves? What is the percentage?
So, this would hold us at the same last year's revenue. I would have to get that calculation based on expenditures, but we could look that up.
Okay, I think I'm going to need that number before... Is there an action item on tonight?
The budget manager is calculating that.
Okay, thank you. I'll stand by.
Are there questions? Councilman Duncan, are you online?
I'm here, sir, yes.
Okay, just wanted to make sure and see it.
Yep.
Okay, proceed, Rochelle. Sure. Go ahead, proceed.
Sir?
Anything further? Well, she said no.
Okay.
Which one is it?
I just have a comment. The East Gate RHID, that project has come along really, really well, and I would just like to thank my colleagues for voting on that. It looks beautiful out there. If you get a chance, go out there and look at it, because they're popping up, and as quick as... They're popping up, they're filling up, so that's a good thing.
They're all occupied?
Well, the ones that are done, yes.
Yeah.
You want one?
No. Thank you. Any others? Okay, thank you, Rochelle. Okay, we have a second presentation. Madam Clerk?
The second presentation is an update from the MTAA. I believe we have Curtis Sneeden and Brian Armstrong here to present.
Okay. Mr. City Manager?
Mayor and councilpersons, the annual update will be given by Brian Armstrong, who's the board chair, and Curtis Sneeden, who is development director.
Gentlemen, welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Members of the council, I am Curtis Sneeden, and I'm the Director of Development for the Metropolitan Topeka Airport Authority, and joined by the Chair of our Board, Brian Armstrong, this evening. And we are delighted to share with you our perspectives on the future of aviation in Shawnee County. This is an exciting time in our community. I think most of you have a sense that we are at an inflection point. Most of you have taken part in the development of a unified strategy that's designed to take this community to the next level. Our aviation assets are a key part of that strategy, and the leadership at the MTAA is focused, as never before, on turning our aero parks into the economic dynamos that we all know that they can be. To frame this up a little bit, I found that it never stops being helpful to put the MTAA in context. We are a separate taxing authority. We were created in 1974, shortly after Forbes Air Force Base was deactivated. And then in 1978, the voters of Shawnee County created a joint city-county authority, and according to the statute, our mission is to acquire, maintain airport properties, and develop and improve those properties. So now, we are responsible for, broadly speaking, three properties here in Topeka. Topeka Regional Airport, and if you're a native Topekaan like me, you still say Forbes just because you can't quite change the verbal habit. It is called Topeka Regional Airport. We're also responsible for Philip Billard Airport over in Oakland and the Topeka Regional Business Center, which is the several hundred acres of property between Topeka Boulevard or Highway 75 and basically the airfield down to the south. That is the scope of our authority, and that's what we're responsible for. Right?
So I just wanted to touch a little bit on how our board's structured, and then how the MTAA and its org structure looks like. So our Board of Directors has two members appointed by Shawnee County, three members appointed by the City of Topeka. Joe Ledbetter on our board is also with us tonight. Eric Johnson is our MTAA Airport President. Oh. All right, great. So, everything is under Eric as President of the MTAA. You can see the different divisions. We have our own police and fire, airport operations, a really diligent maintenance crew that's done a lot of great work the last year, Philip Billard Services as we took over the FBO there, admin and finance, and then economic development. So, last year, as we saw the Topeka Regional Business Center, all the vacant land and the ability to continue to grow and attract businesses, we've been coordinating with GoToPika for the last several years on how we attract businesses to Topeka. And to really maximize that, that's why we did a search last year and lucky enough to get Curtis Sneeden to join us as our Economic Development Director. We've done a lot of great strides already in making it easier for people coming to look at property, to understand what our policies are, what information we have, and it's readily available now, and really lucky to have Curtis helping our staff moving forward. So...
Thank you, Brian.
Now, we are not here to do a deep dive on our budget, but I thought you'd be interested to know, generally speaking, how our fiscal pie is sliced. We get most of our revenues from two broad slices. One of those is rentals. We lease our properties and collect rent from those. We also get money from every pound of fuel that's pumped into an airplane at either of our parks, so we get fuel flowage fees, and fees from some other sources. The other big slice is property tax. We are a taxing authority, so if you were to look at the levy sheet that you get from the county, you would see us listed right alongside the library and the school districts, et cetera. So we have a duty to the taxpayers to manage these assets in a way that optimizes the return on your money. We are bound to the Federal Aviation Administration to work toward becoming financially self-sustainable. That has some implications in terms of the types of transactions we can enter into. And we are also bound by law to make sure our properties are available to all aeronautical users, activities, without discrimination. So your leadership out at the MTAA has set an ambitious course. It is exciting, because we all can sense that Topeka has the potential to really play an important role at the center of, to begin with, an industry sector that we call MRO. That means Maintenance, Repair, and Overhaul. I'll go into a little more depth on that later, but it's an extremely promising area to be trying to attract businesses in. Aerospace components is another possibility that we're exploring, as well as other types of advanced manufacturing. We are working hard to steer our parks into those areas and attract those kinds of businesses. So how are we doing that? Well, first, we have been on a course to upgrade our infrastructure and our aeronautical facilities. If you've been over to Billard, you will have seen that the hangars over there, many of them have been repainted. We are working to just generally raise the level of our infrastructure and our structures. We've been collaborating, collaborated for years with GoToPika. I'm pleased to say that I think that collaboration level has gone up. I spend more time on the phone with my friends at GoToPika than I used to when I was in the same office with them. So, we have been working very diligently together to reach out to the world and bring some of those types of businesses here. We are also collaborating at an unprecedented level with Washburn Tech and Washburn University, and there's a key reason for that that I'll dive into as we get towards the end here. We are also, as Brian alluded to, trying to put together a fresh narrative about Topeka, what we have to offer, and how you, if you are in the avionics industry, could come here and thrive. And we are taking that message to the world. We have, just in the last 15 months or so, invested over $5 million in Billard Airport. Billard is a very special part of our strategy. It could become a boutique, high-tech center in the context of all of our growth, and we are working towards that. We have constructed a new terminal building there. It's got an executive conference room, event space that's already proven itself. It's got a new commercial kitchen. And as I noted, we have invested quite a bit in rehabilitating some of the T-hangers up there and repainting some of those structures. Now, there is a big picture here, and it's referred to as the Kansas Aerospace Triad. As the graphic on your screen would suggest, the aerospace triad is that triangle that's described by Wichita, Salina, and Topeka, that geographic region. We have been working with those communities very closely, because combined, we truly believe this part of Kansas could become a global epicenter in this industry that we call MRO. So MRO is a suite of services that are performed on aircraft to keep them airworthy. It includes overhauling their engines and inspecting them and converting them for different types of purposes. If we are successful in attracting MRO businesses here, that will mean hundreds, at least, of new, skilled, high-paying jobs. It will mean a great deal of new capital investment. It will mean ancillary businesses that come along with that, that are supporting the MRO businesses we're seeking. And that's, I think, the main reason that the MTAA Board and the leadership at your authority are really aggressively rethinking how we can go seize this opportunity. Now, there is one particular opportunity in MRO that has presented itself, and it's emanating out of Wichita, from what we call NIA, the National Institute for Aviation Research. There is a cluster of engineers down there who have done some yeoman's work to get the specifications right for converting wide-body aircraft from passenger planes into freight aircraft. There's an enormous market for that, particularly in the context of the Boeing 777. At one time, that was a perfectly cost-effective way to move people over the ocean. Times have changed, planes have changed, and now, the 777 is a less cost-effective way to move people, but it's still a great way to move boxes over the ocean. There are between 400 and 500 of those giant aircraft parked in the desert right now, waiting for companies and communities like this one to bring their planes in and do the hard work of converting them into freight aircraft. That NIA project is a key initiative that Wichita, Salina, and Topeka are all focused on like a laser, to seize that opportunity. We know that we've got to do at least two things. One is make sure we've got the hard assets to pull that work off. It'll take all three cities. We've already got the longest runway in the state, and we'd never miss an opportunity to assert that fact. We're very proud of that. But we're going to need hangar space, so we're working hard with our leaders at the state level to move towards being able to stand up the sort of enormous structure you need to work on a jumbo jet inside. And there are also some soft assets. We're not going to need to be developing our workforce, so that there are plenty of people here locally who can do this type of airframe and power plant work on jumbo jets. We've been collaborating with Washburn Tech in that context. They are terrific partners. We've always been partners with the 190th Air Refueling Wing, but we're delighted, as we've drilled in on this issue a little bit, to learn that there are already at least 100 people working right across the airfield who know how to do just this kind of work. So Topeka actually has sort of a hidden jewel ready to pounce on this opportunity once all the other pieces fall into place and those 777s start flying into Forbes. That is among the most compelling opportunities that we're working on. It's not the only opportunity. There are a number of other people across the industry and across the country who are calling to ask what's happening in Topeka, and as Brian noted, we're trying to help them understand as clearly as they can that, thanks to our runway, the longest runway in Kansas, thanks to our welcoming and uncrowded airspace, thanks to the other policies that we have in place, they could come to Forbes, Topeka Regional Airport, they could come to Billard, they could set up shop here, and they could thrive. If you ask Brian and I, I think we would tell you the future of aviation in this community is bright, and we look forward to sharing that future with all of you.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation, Chris. Any questions, comments? Councilman Valdivia Akla?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for that presentation, MTAA folks. I know there's a lot of vigorous conversation going on about the money requests that you have going on at the state level, and it'll be interesting to see how all of that plays out. And I think it sounds really exciting, what you're saying, and I think that Philip Billard, being such an integral part of Oakland, it would be definitely not truthful if there was talk that Oakland folks don't want to see this happen as well, this expansion. I think that what we do know is that we request wholeheartedly that you become more community-friendly, rather than after the fact, because we see what has happened now. I don't know if anybody went to Tammy's, but that's closed, and, you know, we see where this is going. So, since I haven't talked to any of you, forward-facing, backward-facing, anyway, I too am asking that you be more community-friendly. And I'm requesting, after we've heard numerous amounts of conversation, the reconsideration of the ugly, jarring, military-type fencing that is only piecemeal in its approach, that has not, in many Oaklanders' ways of believing, was a community-friendly approach, since it was put up, and it was also put up without a permit, and that is against city ordinance, without a permit, and without the input of the community. And we have this military-type fence that is about 160 feet from at least seven residences' front door. And I think that there was a very good question that was asked at the NIA meeting, actually was rather posed when said, "If it was any of you in your homes, in your neighborhoods, would you not contest that as well?" And I think that's a good question, because I know that I would if it was only 160 feet or so from my front door. And so this would be the request, you know, along with everything good that you're talking about. Additionally, I would make the request, just so we're all front and everybody knows it's up, because I've already sent an email to the mayor and the city manager, that as a representative of where Philip Billard Airport is located, that any meetings that occur with MTAA folks in... with MTAA folks and city folks that have to do with these expansions, I'm requesting, and I want this on record, to be a part of those meetings, because I have been a part of none of them. Know I'm busy, got a lot of things going, but I request that due respect. And I think that that would help show some encouragement, because then I will go ahead and relay that back to Oakland folks. And additionally, there has been conversation, when the board, city board positions come up with the MTAA, is that we are talking as a community, as Oakland, how can we get someone on the board that will represent Oakland, rather than it always, or almost always, being folks that have nothing to do with the community, where so much is so deeply impacted. So again, thank you so much for your presentation, and yes, for success, and yes, for economic development and expansion, and yes, for small businesses and neighborhoods. Thank you.
I have a question. You mentioned the NIAR project and gave some explanation as to what that is. I don't know that we've ever really talked about, which is that the ancillary issues that could come along with that, because if you have a project of that magnitude, there at Forbes, there you go again, there have to be a lot of suppliers in line that would have to bring their products to Topeka Regional to make all of those conversions possible. Are we looking at that as well? I would imagine that not just the NIAR hangar and its efforts, but all that that would need to support it, and can we house it at Topeka Regional?
Thank you for that question. I appreciate it, because the context of the presentation required some abbreviation, and that's exactly the sort of point you would expand on if you had a little more time to chat about it. Absolutely, sir. One way to look at it, and I think it's helpful to remind ourselves, that being part of the Kansas Aerospace Triad implies a number of things. One of them is that there is no sense in which Topeka is vying to steal away Spirit Aero Systems to come up here and manufacture fuselages. We're part of Team Kansas on all of this thing, and so the business we hope to win, in addition to working on the jets that nobody, you know, Wichita doesn't have room to work on, is feeling those sorts of suppliers. So for example, there are companies that make the wire harnesses that affix electronics inside the jumbo jets. They could be situated in Topeka and service their clients elsewhere just as easily as anyplace else, and there are a lot of advantages to them to being here. I know that we're collaborating with GoToPica. Thanks to GoToPica, we have access to an expert consultant in the defense and aviation sector who is already bringing companies to us to talk about that are in that area. And I'm going to Chicago next month to a conference that is populated by hundreds of companies that are in that line of work. So you're exactly right. It's not just about the big stuff. We have a lot of opportunity to attract the companies that support that.
Councilman Banks?
Thank you, Curtis, Brian, for your presentation tonight. And my concern is that I'm very excited about the possibilities of having all those entities show up in our city. It's going to mean a lot to us. But I'm also concerned about, Greater Topeka is an organization that sponsors a lot of small businesses. And I'm a little bit concerned about that small business that was there. What happened to those people that was there, if you know? Do they go on to work in the new facilities, or are they just out of a job? Do you know?
Are you referring to Billard now?
Yes, yeah.
Well, the board is in the process of identifying who will be the food service operator in the new airport. I can tell you that the candidates that we've identified to this point through our RFP process, are local. I had somebody at a meeting kind of say something about not liking to go into airports and seeing Taco Bells and Dunkin' Donuts or something, and I was able to assure that person that we're going to end up with a local restaurant operator there, and their decision of who to hire will be theirs. I can tell you that we've had some conversations to the effect that there are some people on the ground there right now who know how to serve food about as well as anybody, so I think there are plenty of opportunities.
Well, having had an opportunity to be out there at the restaurant that Councilwoman Valdivia Alcala referenced, I don't think it's about who you hire. I think it's about who fits into that neighborhood. The few times that I've been there, they're a very community-oriented group. I can't see it being any different if we have an entity that's just in, a local entity or organization that's just serving food. They were way, way closer than that. Thank you for letting me have a chance to hear it tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
One other thing I was wanting to ask about. In the effort to move forward that the, that the board takes, and I would agree with Deputy Mayor, I would encourage updates on a regular basis to the entire governing body, because the success of our efforts at both Billard and Regional affects the entire city. And we want to make sure that there is a shared success, and especially give some consideration to those in the immediate area. I know there's always that concern of how would it affect the, the character of an area? How will it affect traffic flow, all those kinds of things? I think, given that kind of consideration, I believe that it would help as people see that progress move forward, and not just announcing it, but getting that feedback before a general announcement is. So if you have the time or need to adapt what you're pursuing, that you'll have to have the time to take it into consideration. So I am hopeful that we will continue in this effort, because I, I think it's time for us to look at Regional Airport in a different way, and different than what we've always done. I think it's time for us to give the significance of Billard a shine, that how that can become a real business-oriented location for people to come in, experience the city, experience the neighborhood, and improve and hopefully encourage other small businesses that will cater to those that are coming into Topeka, because they're not just going to stay at Billard. They're going to come into Topeka for different businesses, and if there are along the way, different restaurants, retail shops, all those kinds of things that can pop up along in that same area related to the development of the business in that area. Again, I would think the community, what ideas do they think that they can bring to the table to provide some opportunity for small businesses related to the bigger picture that we're trying to accomplish out there? So again, timely communication, I think, would be helpful.
Yeah, I appreciate those comments, Mr. Mayor. We definitely are committed to however frequent updates as we get new information or, just to let you know what's going on, we'd be glad to come back, not only to the governing body, we've also reached out to the county commissioners, and we're giving the same presentation to them here in the very near future to try to keep everyone informed what's going on and where we're going.
Okay. Councilwoman Ortiz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would agree with that. I went to a NIA meeting on Thursday, it's Valley Park, and Valley Park is located off of 21st and Washburn, and there was people there that was upset about the restaurant closing. That's an, I've heard from another member, so it doesn't just affect Oakland, it affects people that have gone over there for years, that enjoy that, what I call mom-and-pop shops, cooking. You know, Chickadee went out of business because of the pandemic, and now, now Tammy's, and people are saying, where are we supposed to go? Not everybody wants to go to any other restaurants, they want that mom-and-pop feel. And this, this gentleman told me that Thursday was the last day, and he was out there, and he said, people just went out there and stayed and wouldn't leave because they were really, really saddened. And he also talked about how she cooked up all her food to get rid of it all. So, you know, I, I think that would be wise for us to get updated reports on that as well, Mr. Mayor. You know, she had 30 years of service, and, and that's, that's a long time for somebody to serve, serve this community, and she had a relationship with people out there. It wasn't just a restaurant you went in and you ate. I know, I know our family, when my uncle lost his son, you know, she sent flowers and she called, and she took food. That's the type of person she was. And so I think that there's, you just can't invest like that anymore. You can't come in an area and, and, and build on a foundation that, that has so much investment with their, with their people citywide. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Any other questions, Councilwoman Hiller?
Thank you, Mayor. I think I know the answer to this question, but for the public that's watching, is your focus right now on that business development? You didn't mention passenger service at all. Is it, is it really on business development right now, or are there some prospects for passenger?
I'm glad you asked that, too, because I, I think the position I hold was created to focus on business development, but it would be a mistake to gloss over the parallel effort. We have a consultant that's working for us on a consistent basis to try to develop commercial air service here, and they are working on that constantly. It's, it's critical to find that. There are a range of reasons why that's a challenge at this particular point in time, but I, sorry for glossing over that.
That's okay.
Sort of focusing on my job, but you're right. That's also an important priority.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
And I would encourage, you know, I try to make all of your meetings, if nothing else, by Zoom, if not in person. If people want to keep informed, those are meetings available to anybody who wants to partake of them. So communication goes both ways. If you want to find out what's going on, take the time to listen to what the board is doing, and I think it's been helpful for me to follow or track the efforts there. So thank you both for your presentation. Okay? Okay, we'll move on to agenda item number three. Brenda?
Items A and B are resolutions introduced by Councilmember Karen, Karen Hiller approving a special event known as the 2024 Modern Day Irish Fest and the Eats and Beats Summer 2024. C is a resolution introduced by Councilmember Christina Valdivia-Acla approving a special event known as the NODO in Bloom. D is approval of the Public Works Engineering Contract between the City of Topeka and Finney Internupseed Consulting Engineers Transportation and Civil Engineering, LLC, an amount not to exceed $133,400 for engineering services. Items E and F are ordinances introduced by interim city manager Richard Neinstedt, allowing and approving city expenditures for the period of October 28th to November 24, 2023, and November 25th through December 29, 2023. G are minutes of the regular meeting of February 20, 2024. There's one application, it's for off-premise for cereal malt beverage license for Casey's store number 4378, located at 2611 Southeast California Avenue, and staff is recommending approval.
Body has heard the consent agenda is read. Is there a motion? Motion to approve by Councilwoman Dobler, second. Second by Councilwoman Ortiz. If we will do the roll call, please.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Yes.
Valdivia-Acla?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Kell?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hofer?
Yes.
And Mayor Padilla?
Yes.
All right, we have 10 yes, the motion carries.
Okay. Move on to the agenda number four, action items. F, the clerk will read.
A is a resolution introduced by the Public Infrastructure Committee comprised of Councilmembers Sylvia Ortiz, David Banks, and Neil Dobler, recommending approval of project numbers 601-133 Phase 5, 291-111 Phase 6, and 291-128 Phase 1 for alley repair in the 800 block between Southwest Lincoln and Southwest Buchanan.
Okay, Mr. City Manager.
Governing body, I am pleased to tell you that Braxton Copley Public Works Director will cover 4A, 4B, 4C, and 4D.
Good to see you, Director. How are you?
Good, thank you very much. This first item is in the 1800 block between Lincoln and Buchanan. This is the replacement of an alley. Anytime that we go in to replace an alley in the older part of town, the first thing that we do is we look at the condition of the sewer. This sewer is 116, 118 years old. It has served its life. It has served, it's served its purpose admirably, but it is beyond the end of its useful life. So to be good stewards of tax dollars, we're going to replace that sewer before we put a brand-new concrete alley on top of it. And with that, I will gladly stand for any questions.
Any questions for the Director? Okay, we've heard that action item read. Is there a motion? Motion to approve by Councilwoman Ortiz, second by Councilman Kell. If you'll call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Valdivia-Acla?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Kell?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hofer?
Yes.
Mayor Padilla?
Yes.
And Councilmember Hiller?
Yes.
All right, we have 10 yes, the motion carries.
Okay. Motion is carried. Brenda, if you'll read the second, please.
B is a resolution introduced by Public Infrastructure Committee comprised of Councilmembers Sylvia Ortiz, David Banks, and Neil Dobler, recommending approval of project numbers 841-200 Phase 1, 291-111 Phase 6, and 291-128 Phase 1 for alley repair in the 1900 block between Southwest Lincoln and Southwest Buchanan.
Okay. City Manager, or is it Braxton?
This, this is the alley immediately to the south of the alley that we just took action on. This one also is well over 100 years old in terms of the vitrified clay sewer. That line needs to be replaced, and then we plan to put a new concrete alley on top of that.
Thank you. Any questions? CNN, is there a motion?
No.
Motion to approve by Councilwoman Ortiz, second.
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Miller. If you'll call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Ortiz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Kell?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hofer?
Yes.
Mayor Padilla?
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Yes.
And Valdivia-Acla?
Yes.
10 yes, the motion carries.
Okay. Motion carried. Move on to action item 4C. Brenda?
C is a resolution introduced by the Public Infrastructure Committee comprised of Councilmembers Sylvia Ortiz, David Banks, and Neil Dobler, amending the 2024 to 2023 CIP and the 2024 to 2026 CIB to increase cost of project number 841-103 for the 2024 Street Preventative Maintenance Program.
Thank you. Before I start into this one, we actually have a couple of photos to show what a ultra-thin bonded asphaltic surface looks like. So this is the before picture on South Kansas Avenue between 29th and 33rd. You can see that we have badly oxidized asphalt pavement, and you can see some of the cracks in that, reflective cracks. And then after the U-Bass treatment, this is the new surface. So U-Bass is 5/8 of an inch thick. Many of you are familiar with what we have is the micro-surfacing. Micro-surfacing is only 1/4 of an inch thick, and that's basically a little asphalt binder and some very fine aggregate. This is a substantial product. This is 5/8 of an inch thick. This is laid with a, with a paver. So this is hot, hot mix laid. It mats up very well. This U-Bass treatment is really good for arterials that carry a higher traffic load. And so one of the things that I have talked about many times is that over the last 20 years, pavement management has really transformed. It used to be you would always do worst first. You would just take the worst street that you have, you would go out and you would do full-depth reconstruction of it. Well, we found that it's far more cost-effective to keep your good streets good. That's why we use the micro-surfacing and why we're moving over into the U-Bass. And I can tell you that in the next few weeks, we're going to come back in front of you to get approval. to get approval for our micro-surfacing and our U-Bass projects, because those are over $250,000. We'll explain the areas that we're looking at. But for U-Bass, one of the areas that we're going to be focusing on is going to be 6th Street between McVicker and Madison, because that's going to carry substantial amount of traffic in 2025, once Polquancy Viaduct work starts, because I-70 is going to be closed in McVicker. So we want to make sure that we've got a street that is in good shape, that's going to be able to bear all of that additional traffic. So with that, I will gladly stand for any question. And our ask at this point is simply to amend the program to increase it by $1 million so that I can fit in some substantial U-Bass work as part of my contract maintenance program for this year.
Councilman Kell?
Just a quick question. All that is is an overlay, like on Kansas Avenue, what you did there?
Yes, sir.
So there's no milling or anything done on that?
That is correct.
Okay. It was great work. I drive it all the time. Besides the little nick that got from one of the car dealership areas, that's been holding up great and driving great. So that's something I would highly recommend that if we look at projects like that, if it's a, as Braxton put it, a high-volume road, you know, we might look at a lot more areas for that, because it's done really well on Kansas Avenue so far.
Correct. And just to put context to it, milling overlay is about $250,000 a lane mile. This one pilot project that we did on U-Bass was right at $90,000 a lane mile. Micro is about $50,000 a lane mile, so it's far more cost-effective. I'm hoping that when we go out on this larger U-Bass, that we'll be able to get that down a little bit. But $90,000 is still a lot better than $250,000, and this does wear very well, and it does refresh that pavement.
Councilman Dobler?
Thank you, Mayor. I commend Public Works for continuing to look for ways to stretch the dollar. They're doing that. We need it. We need every square yard of street repair that we can get in this town, and they're doing their absolute best to get that done. So with that, I would move approval.
Okay. Okay. Got a motion for approval and a second question. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, so just help me understand, because I have not watched the last public infrastructure meeting. The $3 million, then, that U-Bass sounds like it's very, very beneficial. So the $3 million is for 2024. Will that pay and go beyond the work at 6th Street from McVicker to Madison and Madison Street to Monroe Street, 6th to 10th Street? Will that $3 million pay for that, but then more streets will be added throughout the year?
We're hoping, so the short answer is, the U-Bass portion of it on those streets that I just identified, we reasonably expect to be in at around $1 million. So the remaining $2 million we're going to do is part of our regular micro project within that quadrant. And I honestly can't remember the quadrant we're doing for 2024, but we'll go in and we'll do crack sealing, and then we will select many, many lane miles of road for micro. So really, what I'm trying to do is expand this, because I have a pressing need this year to do the U-Bass on those major streets because of PQV, but still want to have sufficient funding to be able to continue with my micro program.
Okay. And is U-Bass something that we don't use as often and that we may start using more in the future? The only reason that this is piquing my interest, honestly, is because when you say about heavy traffic and heavy trucks through there, I'm not asking for anything for Oakland, but I'm just thinking about what that means for heavily trafficked, heavyweight trucks. And if U-Bass is something that you use quite frequently, or if it's something we're starting to use more now to address the multiplicity of issues, I just don't have the familiarity with it.
Great question. So one of the things that I challenged staff to do over the last couple of years was look at our sister cities and look at the treatment methods that they were using. We heard really good things about U-Bass. So last year was our first pilot project, and we selected a minor arterial, which was Kansas, between 29th and 37th. We put it down. We were very impressed in terms of the quality of it, as well as the wearability. So yes, U-Bass is something that we are going to continue to push in the future. And really, the streets that we're looking at are going to be arterials and collectors for the U-Bass treatment. The residential are more suited for the more cost-effective micro-surfacing.
Okay. I understand that. I just appreciate it and appreciate that you've gone out and looked for those ways to deal with the issues that we're having. And it's good to know that we have found something that's working. So thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman Hiller?
A question would be where the $1 million is coming from? Is this extra revenue because the sales taxes come in stronger, or is it taking it away from something else?
So we have a surplus of citywide half-cent sales tax, and that was part of the reason that last year we did that additional $5 million, because we're trying to spend that surplus down. Because honestly, we need to spend all of that money that we have before we can go in front of the voters and say, we want you to renew this sales tax. In fact, when I started, it was forecast to be almost nearly $19 million of surplus in that fund. And we are doing everything that we can to spend that down. And one of the ways that we're doing that is increasing our contract maintenance. We're also going to be, as part of the 2025 CIP, we're going to be asking for an increase in our regular payment management program as well. But this was going to be citywide half-cent sales tax using that surplus. I'm not going to be taking out of other programs or projects to do this.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman Hofer?
I'm curious about milling overlay, U-Bass, micro. How do they compare on time to put them down?
So the micro by far is the fastest and easiest, but you have to get in and crack seal before, and you want to do that during the coldest weather, so that those cracks are open widest. So micro goes down very quickly, because it truly is a slurry that is put down quarter inch thick. Then the next one would be your U-Bass, because that's applied with a paver, that's put down hot, but it's only 5/8 of an inch. So that cools rather quickly, and there's no milling involved. And then you have, the next one would be milling overlay, where you have to go in first and you have to mill, make sure that your base is good, right? And then the last would be full-depth reconstruction.
So how long did the project on Kansas Avenue take?
I will honestly don't remember off, it was only a couple of days, but I will shoot you an email with that specific information in terms of how long it took to get that down.
Well, I'm thinking in terms of looking forward, using it more, that maybe we can get more lane miles down quicker and get more streets covered versus the milling overlay. Is that possible?
Yes, ma'am, but the other, not to belabor this, but the other critical factor is, what's the PCI?
Mm-hmm.
Right? Because micro, like U-Bass, is really intended to keep your good streets good.
Right.
So the target I'm looking for on that is typically 70-plus. Milling overlay, my target I'm looking at is 50-plus, right? So if the surface is that badly degraded, likely I need to go in and do a milling overlay. So it's a number of factors, right? And we're trying to come up with what's the least costly factor for that particular type of pavement to be able to do a rehab.
But I'm thinking potentially, the roads that we have that are high enough PCI, we could cover more of them in a shorter amount of time if we've got the money to do it.
That's exactly the plan, and that's exactly why we are asking for this additional funding for our contract maintenance to be able to keep our good streets good, much more cost-effective than to do more invasive rehabilitation.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Braxton?
Okay. Councilman Kell? So we just kind of went through our state of emergency with potholes. Would U-Bass be a good, like if we're going to have a section where we're just going to pothole, pothole, pothole and fix those, would U-Bass be a good alternative to just patching all those areas and kind of laying down kind of a new, kind of this surface all the way around, rather than having all these potholes that are eventually going to blow out again, more than likely, with the next rain or next, you know, snowstorm, whatever? Is that something we've maybe looked at for high pothole areas as a treatment plan, sort of just repairing the potholes?
So, great question. Typically, where we find the highest level of potholes is in our pavement that has the lowest PCI, because obviously the pothole is, you've got gaps in the pavement, and then you get precipitation in there, and then you get the freestyle, particularly on older streets, worse PCI. So typically, U-Bass is not going to be the best solution. The best solution on those is going to be to come in and do a milling overlay with the appropriate full-depth patching where needed, in lieu of trying to just skim, put a skimcoat over the top of a road that is already at a point of failure.
Braxton, I appreciate, I know that you, for some time now, looked at alternatives to what we had done in the past, or the materials that we had used in the past to repair or maintain our streets and give longer life to some of those that, if they had some attention, wouldn't degrade to the point where it required even more repair. So I think this U-Bass is something, I drove over it, and then I went home and dreamed about it at 29th and Topeka. That's just my plug, because it is really a nice, smooth, clean surface. And as much as we can dedicate to getting our roads repaired into that kind of condition, I'm very supportive of it. But thank you very much for doing that hard work to find those alternatives, rather than us repeating what we had done in the past. So thank you for your presentation. Are there any other questions or comments? Okay. Thank you, Braxton. Do you need a motion? Oh, we have one. We had a motion and a second. So go ahead and take the roll.
Councilmember Banks?
Yes.
Kell?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hofer?
Yes.
Mayor Padilla?
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Yes.
Valdivia-Akla?
Yes.
And Ortiz. All right, we have 10 yes. The motion carries.
Okay. Move on to action item 4D. Brenda?
D is a resolution introduced by the Public Infrastructure Committee comprised of Councilmembers Sylvia Ortiz, David Banks, and Neil Dobler, amending the 2024 to 2033 CIP and the 2024 to 2026 CIB to add project number 861-044 for the Street Light Replacement Program.
Okay. Braxton?
Speaking of innovation, this last year, we also did our first pilot project for solar lighting. And I have a video that Communications is going to queue up to show you the project that we did.
With music?
And according to the manager, it was black as pitch before, and they had a lot of complaints by the employees in terms of access and safety. And so we looked at various alternatives, and given the fact that there was no electricity down there, it was going to be very expensive to do an electrical drop and then run wire down there. And so we came up with this particular product. Staff did a tremendous amount of research, because the first pilot project that we did about 20 years ago for solar lighting was honestly an abysmal failure. The technology at the time was not nearly as what it is now, and the few lights that we put in, in a residential neighborhood, couldn't hold a charge long enough to illuminate all night long during the summer, much less during the winter. These particular lights, the reason why we went with these is they, this particular manufacturer has many, many lights in Northern Europe, where the climate is even worse than we have here. These particular lights performed admirably well during that Arctic conditions that we had with cloudy, cold, stormy days, day after day, with very little sunlight, and these illuminated all night. So a little-known fact is the citywide half-cent sales tax can be used to pay for street lighting. And so that is the funding source that we are asking you for, to approve this program to allow us to come up with a $100,000 a year program for street lighting. Now, typically, our staff loses about 10 to 12 streetlights a year that get hit by cars, trucks, whatever. And right now, they're having to pay for that out of operating budgets. These robust lights that you saw down at the Walmart Distribution Center are right at $10,000 apiece. So we currently have 10 streetlights that are out on 6th Street, west of Fair Lawn. And that, the reason why those lights are dark right now is because twice thieves have broken into the lights and have stripped all of the copper wire out. And so our plan is to put these solar lights up, and then we will take those existing poles and lights, and we will put those into our scratch and dent pile, and we will use those to replace things that get broken. So $100,000 basically would allow us to do 10 solar lights, allow us to replace lights that get broken. And so that's my ask for you, is to give me an opportunity to create a program for doing street lighting. And then we will, where appropriate, we'll use solar, and where appropriate, we will run our own lights. I think, as I've told you guys several times, city has about 1,800 lights, and then the vast majority, 800, 500, are actually owned by EverGee. And as we do programs in larger projects, typically, we're installing our own lights, because it's far more cost-effective for us instead of paying a tariff to EverGee. And with that, I will gladly stand for any questions, and would hope that you would pass this resolution to allow me to establish a program for streetlight replacement.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Miller, and then Deputy Mayor Valdivia-Akla.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few questions. The life expectancy of these lights, what is that?
10 to 15 years for the bulb, the battery, and the panel.
Okay. Is there any warranty from the company when we purchase these?
I believe it's a 10-year warranty.
Okay.
Of course, they're telling us that they'll last, you know, 10 to 15 years.
Right.
So.
Okay. How long does it take to replace the current light with one of these new lights?
Lead time right now, the big thing is the lead time. You're probably looking at three months, possibly four months, to get these manufactured and get them shipped. And then it's a matter of staff just doing the work themselves, scheduling it in, or hiring a contractor to do it. But it's not terribly time-consuming, because it's not like we have to run conduit and pull electricity and wait on EverGee if we're doing solar.
If we have to hire a contractor to do it, is it going to come out of that $100,000? So do we go one light less, or?
The $10,000 I gave you is all in using a contractor.
Okay. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't want to belabor the point, but when ideas come, when staff immerses themselves and looks for new ideas and possibilities, I think it's one of the most exciting things that we can do as the city of Topeka. It doesn't mean it's always going to come with 100% success, but kudos to the staff that went and looked this hard for something that is solar-related. And I think I have a sense that you have a commitment to looking for those type of answers, right? The efficiencies. The efficiencies, but also understanding where we are with trying to go as green as possible. I understand huge challenges. I'm not going to talk about that. But I'm just saying, good job to the staff for doing this. And do we consider this a pilot? Is this like a pilot program? Or do you think that this is going to be the way forward for the city with the solar?
So spoiler alert, I'm going to be asking for you to fund this, this program at this level as part of the 2025 CIP. But the reason I'm asking for an amendment to the existing is because I want to get started right now. I want to get those lights over by the governor's mansion replaced on Sixth Street. And I want to replace them with solar. And you're absolutely right. I'm lucky that I have a staff that is open to me asking the question. And I think they get tired of that, but we're not going to stop. We're going to continually challenge ourselves to look for new solutions or out there and better ways to do things and more cost efficient ways to do things.
Well, it sure beats doing the same thing over and over, right? I mean, when you can ask the question, be curious about it, be creative about it, and then try it. So I just think it's excellent. I would also say, I'm also for putting forth the successes that we do as a city and, you know, with marketing and media and all of that. We have to let Topeka know these type of things that we're doing, this out the box way that we're trying to move forward. And I'm just saying that I hope you utilize that whatever way you can in your department to let community, the larger Topeka community know. Splash it all over Channel 4 or whatever.
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Kell?
I like the ingenuity that your staff's gone about. My only recommendation would be to let our staff do it. I think this should be a great learning experience for the men and women that are out on the ground to learn how this stuff works and even if we have to just have one contractor out there with the rest of our staff, someone that's maybe an expert in the field to try to do this. But I think this would be a great way, rather than contracting it out, to let our own staff do it. So this way, they can find a way to learn and maybe find those ideas themselves at the lower level and bring those to the upper management on suggestions and ideas. Thank you.
Further, Councilwoman Ortiz?
May I make a motion to approve?
Motion to approve by Councilwoman Ortiz, seconded by Deputy Mayor. If you call the roll, please.
Okay, councilmembers Kell?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hofer?
Yes.
Mayor Padilla?
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Yes.
Valdivia Akala?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Even though I was robbed at the committee with this, we didn't vote yes, even though I was robbed with this, we didn't see that thing, that same presentation.
In the video?
With all the music and all that.
I remember.
Yeah. Even though we were robbed, I'll vote yes.
Okay, we have 10 yes, the motion carries.
I'd like to, at this point, as we have gone through these items on the action item piece, to acknowledge and thank the Public Infrastructure Committee for their recommendations on these projects. I think it's important to acknowledge that this has been a very helpful standing committee for our governing body and it helps move some things along, helps to get some questions answered before we get into this stage of voting. So thank you for your work and effort and for serving on the committee. Okay, we'll move on to four E. Brenda?
E is a resolution introduced by interim city manager Richard Neinstad authorizing the use of excess funds from unreserved fund balances.
City Manager?
So Mayor and governing body, before Rochelle Matthews reviews this with you, I want to say a couple of things. Number one, you can only spend the money once, once, all right? I think that's important to remember. This is the best guess by staff tried to put together the best list on where this money could best be spent as a recommendation to you. You're fortunate to have this. You might not have this every year. So this is for one-time expenditures. So with that, Rochelle and Josh?
Thank you, City Manager. So as we alluded to in our presentation earlier, we proposed the list of several surplus use items. And if it's okay, I'd like to review them briefly. The first would be the fleet building that has been previously discussed with Director Copley for that capital project in the amount of $3.2 million. The next item would be $2 million to be transferred to our auto insurance fund for our self-insured auto policy that was implemented in 2023. $2 million to be set in a capital expenditure project for Hotel Topeka capital expenditures. A $790,000 for IT switch replacement inside our city infrastructure. $352,000 to transfer to our risk reserve funding. $200,000 for the LMI funding for Change Our Culture and Property Maintenance Program previously approved by the Public Health and Safety Committee. And lastly, $120,000 to rehabilitate a paint truck to add 10 years of service to its life versus purchasing a new one. These are one-time capital expenditures totaling $8.6 million. And Councilman Dobler, if I can answer your question, at the end of 2022, our reserve percentages were 27%. With projected year-end surplus and the spending of these projects, we would take that percentage down to 26. And then as a reminder, this governing body approved the use of reserves for the 2024 operating budget, namely the firm project. And so at the end of 2024, assuming a balanced budget, that percentage would again drop to 24% at the end of this year.
Rochelle, what was the second item on your list?
$2 million transfer to the auto insurance risk fund.
Any questions? Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. Actually, it's a comment. I'm just asking that it be noted on the record. I can't, you know, the $200,000 is so important to this LMI property maintenance rehab funding. I understand that this is all lumped together, which is troubling to me. I understand this is, I'm going to be told this is the way it is, but I cannot, because I need to be consistent, support this and I will not vote for this, with the $2 million that is going to go to the hotel operations capital expenditures. So I just want to make sure it's in the record that that is why I'll be voting no. Thank you.
Further, Councilwoman Ortiz?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Why can't we vote on it separately?
City Attorney?
Any member could make a motion to strike something at any time or add something. So you could, you could, it's one resolution at this point, but you could also make motions to direct us to break it out into separate resolutions.
I would like to make a motion that we vote on each item separately.
Second, that motion.
Is there a second? Second, my Councilman Kell? He's over here doing this. I don't know whether he's making a motion or needs a break. Councilman Dobler?
Thank you, Mayor. How were these items arrived at? Who developed this list of items?
It was developed by Director Finance, by myself, by input from the public works director and from other staff.
Was there input from the fire department, police department on one-time expenditures? I'm thinking more life safety issues that might be out there that we could address?
I don't believe so.
I, I don't disagree with any of these items and I'm fine with voting on them separately. I guess, you know, we, we spend a lot of time on the budget every year. This is about less than 10% of our general fund budget and it kind of gets thrown in here in one night. I think we need a little bit of time to look this over, think about it. I'd like to know if there's, I'd like to hear from the fire chief, police chief, if there's items that they, they could cover. So I guess I would, if I could make a friendly amendment to, to kick this out a couple of weeks to give us time to think about it, ask questions. It's not going to hurt us. Money will still be there, right?
Yes.
So I guess I'd make that a date certain of whatever the council meeting is, two weeks from tonight, March 19.
If I may, before we move forward, Rochelle has, I think, a comment that she wants to add.
So just a transparency level, that that is an acceptable weight to push this item. It will push us past the start of audit fieldwork. So not choosing tonight means we will make this an audit adjusting entry that will be proposed during the finalization of the trial balance where both the city and the auditors would have to agree for it to go into the final trial balance.
Councilman Dobler?
I am more than happy to make this an audit adjusted action because I don't know what that means. Frankly, I don't really care. So I'll stand with my motion. I appreciate your bringing that up, but you know, it's accounting and that's beyond me. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilwoman Ortiz?
I will withdraw, I will withdraw my motion.
Okay. Withdraw the second?
Yes.
Okay. Councilwoman Hiller?
I guess my, when I looked at this, I saw it as adjustments of things we were going to do anyway, with the exception maybe of the LMI grant money. And so in a way, it doesn't matter what's on the list as long as it was already in the budget. So maybe you could, could help us with why each of these is a same, we've had this since the 15th of February. So it's good that we're having the conversation now, I guess. But aren't all these things essential anyway?
Yes, ma'am. And not only were they things we need to do, they were items we could use to avoid geo-bonding, to fund projects we need based on our, for example, our move to being self insured in 2023 for auto insurance. Based on work with the risk management department, we experienced roughly half a million dollars worth of claim experience in 2023. So this $2 million would give us approximately a year and a half to two years worth of claim experience going forward without having to draw on any additional funding source or reserves.
So if, I realize each one of them is different, but if we were, it's kind of six and one half dozen of the other, what department it comes out of, if the essential is that it's, it's saving us money that we were otherwise going to spend. If I've, if I've got that right.
Yes, ma'am. If we were not to fund these with reserves, we would have to fund them either through general fund budget expense or other financing source.
Or bonding paid off by general. Thank you.
Councilman Duncan and then Councilman Dobler.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
So I wholeheartedly support Councilman Dobler's motion. I actually had requested of staff that this had been placed as a non-action item tonight instead of an action. And so obviously that did not happen for whatever reason. So I was already in line to try to ask this. And of course, as you all know, I will have at least another request as it relates to a property we own, right connected to city hall, T-PAC. So it gives me a chance to continue to make my case for that and have that conversation. But I do think this requires a little more conversation in general, so I wholeheartedly support the motion.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Dobler?
Thank you, Mayor. Weren't we paying half a million dollars for auto insurance in the past and we got rid of that? I guess I'm asking the city attorney because I think that was the discussion.
Yes, we were paying $500,000 on average with our, oh, sorry, I turned off. My mic not on. Yes, we were paying up to our deductible of $500,000 roughly every year. I think to Rochelle's point, it works great until the year the fire truck is the one that hits something and then our numbers get a lot higher. And I think 2023, we had a lot of claims, so it probably drew down, but it's still about average, yes.
Thank you.
So remind me, Madam Burke, is there a motion on?
Yes, so we have a motion by Councilmember Dobler, seconded by Kell. No, Kell, did you, Dobler and?
You rescinded.
I didn't.
She withdrew and he withdrew.
Ortiz and Kell withdrew their motion. And Dobler made a motion to defer until March 19th and then Ortiz seconded that. Am I that right?
Okay, I want to make sure.
Thank you for certifying me.
Any further discussion? Councilwoman Hiller?
If what I'm hearing then is what we need is a description of each of these and what it means?
Yes, ma'am. And if Councilman Duncan has any additional changes, we can, if it would like, if the governing body would like, we can bring this as a non-action discussion item at next week's meeting to discuss these in detail before action on the 19th, if that would please the body.
That'd be a good idea. A good idea.
Okay, you want to amend your motion, you agree with that?
Deputy Mayor?
For discussion, okay.
Sorry, do you go first or do I? It's just a question.
Go ahead.
So when we have this discussion next, next week, this will be a non-action item, we're going to be able to flesh out more of what your concerns were and talk about Spencer and what T-PAC, blah, 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 blah. That's when this will happen? So we're all on the same page?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Still, discussion next week and action the weekend.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Great. Okay, we've had the motion and the second. We're ready for a roll call.
Councilmembers Miller?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hofer?
Yes.
Mayor Padilla?
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Yes.
Valdivia Akala?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
And Kell?
Yes.
All right, we have 10 yes, the motion carries.
Okay, motion carries. I appreciate the discussion, Mr. George, and we'll make sure that we've considered everything and given everybody an opportunity for that one-time use of the funds. Make sure somebody isn't getting left out. Okay, we'll move on to action item four F. Brenda?
F is a resolution introduced by Public Infrastructure Committee comprised of councilmembers Sylvia Ortiz, David Banks, and Neil Dobler amending the 2024 to 2023 CIP and the 2024 to 2026 CIB to include project number 131082 for the fleet building replacement.
Okay, City Manager?
Governing body, Mr. Copley is already at the table.
Governing body, this request is to amend the 2024 CIB to add a project for the construction of a fleet garage. The cost that we had, a high-level cost estimate that our architect provided us over a year ago was $5.5 million for a garage roughly the same size as our existing garage. To date, KDOT has approved $2.4 million of expenses and compensation for the existing garage. We have pending $1 million of additional requests from KDOT that we are, a couple of those items, we've already given to them, they're looking on, others we're getting cost estimates. So that basically gives us a delta between $3 million and $2 million of what would be needed. The way this CIP amendment is worded is that it says GO or cash. So in the event the governing body on the 19th were to say, we could use ending balance money for making up that delta, it would be that, otherwise it would be, be GO. So we've got flexibility on this. I will say that this is the beginning of a, of a long journey, that I will be back in front of you multiple times. So the first would be to come back in front of you for approval of a design build contract after we had put an RFP out on the street. After that, if we are going to purchase a site, I would have to come back in front of you to get approval to purchase the site. And then lastly, because this garage, whether we rehab an existing garage or build a new one, is going to be well over $250,000, before that project can be approved to go out to bid, I have to be back in front of you another time. So again, this is the start of a long journey and of me coming back in front of you many times. I will tell you that we've reached out to Kansas Gas Service for a potential for a temporary home with a facility they're not using. I've got a meeting with Henry and the owner I've got a meeting with Henry and the owner of Main Line to look at the old Sears garage, as well as some other old garage that's down in that general area, to look for a temporary home. Because Q1 of 2025, we have to be out of our existing garage because it's going to be demolished as part of the PQV project. So with that, I will stand for any questions and would ask you to help me get started on this journey to get a new fleet garage or rehabilitated fleet garage, depending on what our options are.
Okay, before I take any motions, I'd like to offer the opportunity for any members of the Public Infrastructure Committee, if they, I know they recommend approval on this. Any comment that you might want to make in support of this because you've recommended approval?
Well, my colleagues can chime in. We've got to start somewhere, and we've got to. We've looked all over Topeka, and what this does is this gets a consultant to start moving on it and helping us, correct, Braxton?
Correct. So when we put the RFP on the street, one of the items, we're looking for a design-build team, but one of the critical items is to help us with site selection and to look at what are our options out there, whether it's new build or if there's an existing building that could potentially be rehabilitated.
So we, we are running out of time, Mr. Mayor. And we're going to look up, and we're not going to have anywhere to move any of our fleet, our fleet machinery and all of that. So we've got to get started. So I would ask my colleagues to support this. And if you know of a site, get ahold of Braxton, but I think he's searched high and low. So with that, I'd make a motion, Mr. Mayor.
We have a motion, Councilman Dobler, do you want to second or do you have a comment?
I'd like to do both, if I may.
Please.
Fantastic. I'll second it and really just second what Councilwoman Ortiz said. The Infrastructure Committee has literally looked at this thing for three years, I think. We've asked Public Works to go back and look at different options from outsourcing to finding existing buildings. And at each of those, with each of those questions, they've come back with, with good data. And the bottom line is, we need to, we need to move forward with this. We don't have any options. And so I certainly support it at this point. I will make it, if I may, even though I seconded that, I would like to make a substitute motion. We have an existing CIP, and I know we're going to discuss the new CIP a little bit later. I would like to, there's a line item in there for Elevation Parkway for 2024. I believe it's $3 million. You know, we've had a lot of discussion about Elevation Parkway. In the last year, I have heard no interest from developers, property owners in that area. I think it's time to move away from that project until the owners of that property come forward and say, "We're willing to invest in the infrastructure as opposed to the city doing all of it." So my motion, my substitute motion would be to replace the Elevation Parkway sum of $3 million in the 2024 CIP with this project. And I understand we may fund it with cash or whatever, but that essentially removes $3 million that we're going to replace with our portion of, of this project. Thank you.
Have a substitute motion on the floor. Is there a second for the substitute motion? Second by Councilman Kel. We'll vote first on the substitute motion. If it passes, then they'll move away. Deputy Mayor.
Darn good idea. Thank you.
Okay, Councilwoman Heller.
This is the only motion we're going to vote on, right? Okay, I just wanted to clarify that between this supplemental spending list that we just looked at and this one, if I understand correctly, what we're voting on in terms of allowing for a total budget of, whatever it is, 5.75, 5.575 million, is that allows you the budget to spend that money, but we're expecting then to get at least 2.5 to 3.5 million back from KDOT against that 5.57 number, right?
Correct. The amount of compensation that we expect to get from KDOT is in that 2.4 to 3.5 million dollar range. And I will defer to legal and finance as to how they can make that money available to fund this project.
Okay, because what I was looking at is that if we can do better than that with, with the negotiations with KDOT, or if I understand right, if we end up buying an existing building that needs repair, A, we won't have to move twice if we can move into it right away, and also KDOT would assist with some of the rehab. So we've got the potential to still, you need a budget so you can start, but we've got the potential to chip away at this steadily, right?
That is, that is correct. If we were to buy an existing building, that would make us potentially eligible for federal relocation assistance that can be used to do things like bring parts of the building up to meet existing city, city code.
Appreciate all your work on this. I just wanted to clarify that what we'd be approving tonight on this one was just a maximum. But, but what we're talking about, a maximum of 5.575, not eight or nine, right?
At this tick of the clock, yes. That's the plan is to, the 5.5, so.
And then less any reimbursements or opportunities?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor and a second for a substitute motion. If you call the roll, please.
All right. Councilmembers Dobler.
Yes.
Duncan. Hofer.
Yes.
Mayor Padilla.
Yes.
Councilmembers Heller.
Yes.
Valdivia Akala.
Yes.
Ortiz.
Yes.
Banks.
Yes.
Kel.
Yes.
And Miller.
Yes.
All right, we have nine yes the motion carries.
Thank you, Councilman Dobler, for that substitute motion. Now we'll move on to the non-action items. Brenda, if you were read.
A is discussion of the proposed 2025 to 2034 capital improvement plan and the 2025 to 2027 capital improvement budget.
Mr. City Manager.
Mayor and governing body, Josh McInarney, our senior financial analyst, will make this presentation to you. Go ahead, Josh. Yeah, thanks, City Manager. So tonight, we're kicking off our annual CIP presentations. But first, we're going to play a video showing 2023 completed projects that were funded by past CIP funding. Uh, no, it doesn't have music. I don't think so. I haven't watched it. Talking, yeah.
It has talking.
It doesn't have as good as music as the previous one. Among the larger CIP projects completed in 2023 was the reconstruction.
There's speeding going on there.
Among the larger CIP projects completed in 2023 was the reconstruction of Southwest 12th Street from Gage Boulevard to Kansas Avenue. Sidewalk and bike lane work, along with lighting, traffic signals, and pedestrian crossings significantly improved pedestrian access and safety in this area. Southwest 17th Street from Wanamaker Road to I-470 was also reconstructed and received waterline replacement, as well as improvements to the stormwater system. Kansas Avenue received ultra-thin bonded asphalt surface, or U-BASS, from 29th to 37th Street. On Gage Boulevard, pavement was milled and overlaid from N-Land Drive to Sixth Avenue. And in areas from Huntune to 12th, crews replaced water main and stormwater pipe. That stretch of Gage also received mill and overlay and full-depth patching. In 2023, City of Topeka crews fully reconstructed nearly nine lane miles of pavement, resurfaced 78 lane miles of pavement, and milled and overlaid almost 43 lane miles. Throughout the city, 35,483 linear feet of sidewalk was constructed or replaced. 79,111 linear feet of curb and gutter was also replaced. For utilities, crews replaced or rehabilitated 12,749 linear feet of storm sewer system, 5,630 linear feet of sanitary sewer collection system, and 29,946 linear feet of water mains. In total, 124 capital projects were completed in 2023, representing nearly 68 million budgeted dollars invested into our community assets and infrastructure. 74.2% of that total, or $50.3 million, repaired or replaced streets, traffic signals, and sidewalks. $13.8 million was used for stormwater, wastewater collection or treatment, and drinking water treatment and distribution systems. And $3.7 million of the budget enabled repair and vital updates to city-owned facilities and building structures. I want to thank Taylor and her team for putting that video together kind of on a short, short notice. But we think it's good to kind of start off the presentations that way to show what we've done with past approved money that you guys have granted us. So kicking, I'll wait till she gets the PowerPoint up. But what we're covering today is basically the presentation schedule of the CIP. So kind of a roadmap for the next six weeks. And then an overview of what a CIP even is, because we have, the city manager hasn't been through our CIP process before, and also some new council members and as well as the public, how a project ends up getting in the CIP. Some of the funding sources that we use, obviously, we've alluded to some tonight, such as GO bonds, operating funds, sales tax. Some of the constraints and challenges staff faces while constructing the CIP, and then just a quick page guide on how to read the CIP. So on your screen now is just kind of the roadmap of the presentation schedule. So tonight's the, the general overview. Next week will be Braxton and his team going over public works projects, which includes roads, bridges, sidewalks, et cetera. And then on the 19th will be utilities, which are stormwater, wastewater, and water projects. After that, we have a two-week break because of an off week in council. But as we know, and as some of you have been through before, the CIP process is pretty fluid. So we'll come back with amendments or updates to the book as per request of the governing body, or if anything comes up unforeseen at this point. Okay, so a couple of terms we always use, and we've used some tonight. A capital improvement plan in the book is the next 10 years. So that's 2025 through 2034, and so commonly known as the CIP. We have the CIB, the capital improvement budget, which is the next three years. Couple of the reasons why we break those two out is, the main reason is our CIB, we have a policy that we can't bond, or without governing body approval, we can't have more than $27 million worth of bonds over the next three years. So that's kind of what, that's kind of the importance of identifying what's in the CIB. And then this is a document that's approved annually by the governing body. Reason being is projects are identified later out in the timeframe. And then as we actually do work or engage design consultants on the projects, we get more of a scope and more of a, the accurate cost identified. And so why do we do this? So it's a good, it's a good collaborative method for staff to use. So we don't, so utilities and public works are working together to do projects. A good example of that is 6th to 8th on Quincy, we replaced the water line and then did a mill and overlay on top. And then lastly, it's a good communication document to the public to communicate what we're doing so they can plan and meet their needs accordingly. That way, if we're fixing a road that affects many businesses or such the like. And this slide is a visualization, kind of the last slide. So how it kind of, how we identify projects as we place it in years four to 10. And then, as I said earlier, as it gets close to the horizon date that actually occurs, it would then enter the CIB, and then it would come to you guys for approval once it meets the given criteria. So how does a project get into the CIP? So it has to meet one of these criterias, and most commonly, it's the very last criteria because we, a lot of these projects are large scale. So think of like 12th Street as a road. That project took a couple of years. That doesn't necessarily fit neatly in the parameters of an operating budget. So we like to transfer money into a project number and into the capital budget. That way, we can spend it out over time. And then, so a key caveat that we've alluded to tonight was any project over $250,000 has to go back to you guys and the PWI committee for approval. So those bevy of project approvals that you've approved tonight, that was stemmed from this policy. So just because it's, you approve it in the CIP, does not necessarily mean it's the end-all, be-all. If it's over $250,000, you'll get a chance to see it again and prove it again. So as Braxton was alluding to earlier, a fleet building would be one of those examples. This slide is a, it's not on your screen right now, but a funding source summary. And so obviously, the city has a variety of different funding sources that it taps into to replace and maintain our assets. And this is a good segue into some of the constraints that we have. So a lot of these funding sources have certain constraints, what, what they can be used on. So the citywide half-cent sales tax can only be used on replacing existing assets and not any new assets. So if we want to put in a new sidewalk that doesn't currently exist, the citywide half-cent sales tax can't cover that. We'd have to find another funding source. Other financial subjects are, like I alluded to earlier, are the $27 million cap that we face over three years. We can't exceed that unless the governing body allows us to exceed that. And then if we have funds, operating funds available, we try to tap into those to use. But those are subject based off availability of how revenue is coming in versus expenses. And then finally, one of the other constraints that we have to take in fact is timing of projects. So obviously, we'd like to fix as many streets as we can at the same time. But if one street happens to be a D2 route for another street, we necessarily can't fix them at the same time. So if we wanted to fix Kansas Avenue, 10th to 17th is the same time as Topeka Boulevard from 10th to 17th. Probably wouldn't be a good idea because it wouldn't fit traffic flow. And then the last thing we wanted to cover was, last year, there was some, a lot of confusion about on how to read the book. So on pages six to seven of your book this year, for you guys in the public, we provided a short page guide on what each section means and kind of how to read the book. Just as a, as a context for people who are new or people from the public who are getting ingratiated with this for the very first time. And that, before I, before we get into any questions that you guys have before you, I mean, chance to dig into the book, I wanted to thank Braxton, Sylvia, and their staff for putting a lot of work into this book. I think they've made a comment that it's kind of been the smoothest process it's been thus far. So I know it takes a lot of time because that's not necessarily what they work on a day-to-day basis. So I like to thank them for their hard work on this.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Councilwoman Orteez?
I'd like to thank you for that page that tells us how to read it. That's awesome. I've been here a little long, a little while, and I've never seen that come across my desk. So, you know, as councilmembers, we just try to figure it all out before we come to you and ask. But that's awesome. That's really awesome. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Dobler.
Just to, excuse me, was able to talk a minute ago until I turned the mic on. When was a $9 million cap set? Anybody know offhand?
It's been since I was in office and you, but 10 years ago, maybe.
Okay, that's, that's good to know. If you look at inflation over the last 10 years, if $9 million in 2014 is about $12 million now, it's probably time, that doesn't even take into account the, the, the rate of construction inflation is much higher than the CPI. So I think it's probably time to look at extending that cap to meet reality. Maybe something we want to discuss a little bit as this process moves along. Thank you.
Good observation. Councilwoman Hofer.
I was wondering that myself because I was thinking about the Polk Quincy Utility Project. It's already $20 million. And you throw in what's coming up in the next couple of years, and I think we're beyond the 27.
Well, the Polk Quincy Viaduct would be revenue bonds, so it would not be subject to the limit that Councilwoman Dobler is discussing.
Okay. Good.
Further comment? Councilwoman Heller?
Just to put a kind of a point, counterpoint on the table on that issue. I mean, one of the things I was wondering, we, we talked about it last year in, in the process, was depending on how the revenue came in, based on our experience in 2022 and 23, and how it, how it works in 24. I think in 24's budget, you mentioned earlier that we move the firm, the, the building expenses out of the bonding queue and into cash. Um, at least for the year.
Yes, ma'am.
And, and so we were looking last year at sustaining that kind of thing and perhaps moving more things out of bonding altogether into cash. Um, was one reason there was a debate about whether to reduce taxes last year, reduce the mill levy. Because we say, we, it costs us 60% more to bond our projects right now at the current interest rates. That's a lot of money that could go into operating expenses, other repairs, preventive maintenance, and so on. And so bonding isn't just stretching your payments. It costs 60% more. So just as we, as we consider in balance.
Further comment? Questions? Josh? Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Michelle, thank you. Okay, we'll move on now. There are no further action items. We move to uh, public comment. We have one individual signed up for public comment this evening, Rochelle Hamilton.
Good evening.
Hello, again. Um, so I spoke two weeks ago, I believe, on the um, you guys are just kind of bulldozing out the camps down on the river, right? Um, and I was very disappointed to find out that last Monday, a bunch of my friends' camps did get bulldozed, and they're just, you know, not there anymore. Um, there is already case law, I believe it's Martin versus Boise, pardon my pronunciation on it, uh, in the Ninth Circuit Court that was um, the, the Supreme Court declined to rehear it, which means that it's the law of the land now, that it is unconstitutional to ban urban camping unless there's more uh, beds in your shelter than there are homeless people, which is not the case here. Um, besides the fact that it's just bad city planning, that's not how you solve the problem. That's just like trying to solve the symptom, not the cause that's going on. Besides being just completely inhumane anyways, that's the only place that those people have, you know? And you just went and bulldozed their stuff and left it in a pile down there, which is not helpful to anybody. Um, and I feel like I should note that um, because there's already case law saying that that's unconstitutional, the uh, repercussions of going ahead and enforcing those unconstitutional laws, which are now invalid, unlawful, and illegal to enforce, is that the city officials would be held in contempt of court and would face jail time or fines. That's how the law works, right? Um, I, I guess that's all that I really have to say about it. But I was just completely disappointed that you guys can't be on the right side of history. There's actually, Kansas also ruled in favor with this Ninth Circuit Court also. So you guys are going against Kansas, even if it wasn't the federal thing, which means that all the states have to follow it. Kansas also agreed that that's unconstitutional to do that. It's cruel and unusual punishment, and uh, so that violates your Eighth Amendment right, I believe. Um, and then like I said, that's just not the correct way to handle that situation at all. Like that's not helping anything, that's making it worse, that's giving those people more of an obstacle into getting back into society as a regular kind of, like, functioning person. Um, you just set all of those people back, not much more. Thank you.
Thank you. There, uh, no other person signed up for public comment. We move to announcements. Brenda?
Uh, on the March 12th agenda, we have, it looks like two expenditure ordinances on consent agenda. Action items include four resolutions approved by the PI Committee. Those are all amending the CIP over $250,000 of project budgets. And we will have a continued discussion on the CIP and continued discussion on the surplus funds.
Okay, thank you. City manager?
I have nothing.
Thank you, sir. Uh, we'll move on to governing body members. Councilman Miller?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Councilman Dobler?
Nothing, mayor.
Mr. Duncan has signed off. Councilwoman Hofer?
All I have is happy birthday, city manager.
I was letting the mayor take that one. I, I sent him a note.
Yeah, I knew that. I wished him happy birthday earlier today. Yeah. I don't want to embarrass him with the happy birthday unless you're so inclined.
He'd probably love it.
Okay. Councilwoman Hiller?
Thank you. I just have um, a list of kudos that I'll go through quickly, I, I think. Um, first, to utility and finance. We got a, a message midweek that due to the efforts of our utility staff as well as finance staff, we were able to turn in a, a FEMA submission for over $10 million in what the freeze thaw, was it the water cycle or freeze? The cold event caused for us. Not only does that put us in a position, speaking of our capital budget, of getting $10 million back for money that we've either spent already or that we're going to have to spend. Um, but also, as it turns out, our submission of that $10 million put the state over the threshold in order to, to submit on behalf of everyone in Kansas to get that reimbursement. And I just, it matters to, to look at the big picture, not just our own money right in the checkbook. And I'm really proud of that effort and that collaboration. Um, I wanted to give you public kudos for it. Also, I wanted to give kudos to the planning and engineering staffs. I don't know about the rest of you, but I've had probably an average of about one public hearing on something um, a week for the last couple of months. And the staff and the consultants with them have been just great. They have welcomed the citizens from the neighborhoods to come and speak up for the collaboration. I've got Polk Quincy, so I've got the utilities things here and there, and River Road, and a whole lot of different things. But um, the citizens have come as well and have had really good feedback about how whatever that project is might impact them. And it's been clear that the planning staff and/or the um, the engineering folks, depending on the issue, have taken that to heart, and it's made a difference in the decisions. And I know I've got one, two, that are actually coming back for a second visit because somebody, key was missing or somebody raised a big issue. And so I just wanted everybody to know that that's what's happening, at least in District One and related, and, and it's, it's going well. I also have been, between people calling about street issues and code issues, I've had an average of one a week, or sometimes one a day of each one lately. But the staff in both cases, at code compliance and at Street Braxton, takes those first calls and then shoots them out in street, have been very responsive, very reasonable. You know, the things that people call in about are always just on the surface, the way they looked, and you need a little deep dive. But I've got some vacant houses that people keep getting back into, and some folks that have been pretty angry about the way they've been dealt with. And the staff consistently has been responsive um, in both cases. And just wanted to do some shout-outs there. And also, with our conversations just this evening, I want to give credit probably to then Deputy Mayor Dobler for leading the charge to get the big projects back on the council agendas. I think this is the first time we've seen a string of them like that. But when, when I listen to and, and watch the conversation and the questions and how much we all learned by being able to discuss those projects, that's why I supported putting them back on. It, it, you know, it's kind of hard to go to a class and get utilities and Streets 101 and absorb it all in two hours. And so getting it as these projects come up and getting information about whether prices changed, I think is valuable. I think it went well tonight. And so thank you, everybody, for voting on it, and the staff did a great job. That's it.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, mayor. A couple, just two things. One, um, just getting over a bad case of flu and to remind, I know I got it in City Hall somewhere. I know, I know it. But just reminding everybody to take care of themselves, to wash their hands, to stay home if you're sick, to make sure that you're testing for COVID. Mine came out negative. I tested twice. Uh, to mask if you feel that you need to. And, and so everybody just take good care of yourselves. I was talking to some folks in City Hall where they say there's a lot of sickness going around. But you know, take care of yourselves as well and your family. And then the second one is, I know that we're going through some um, ah, computer issues with city emails and things of that nature. I just wanted to say to the city manager, I really appreciate your proactive stance in this and understanding that we have to get some kind of designated policy and procedure when we, as council people, cannot access our emails and when there is no protocol as far as how to let us know when this is happening. Uh, it's very, very frustrating with sometimes a lack of communication. But I really feel that you understand this, and I want you to know that I deeply appreciate you moving in that capacity uh, to get that, to get that going. Thank you, mayor.
Following that just very quickly, um, city manager, is tomorrow the day that governing body can have their computers updated and stuff? Okay, so if everybody hasn't gotten the word yet, uh, bring in your devices tomorrow so that we can get updated.
I believe it's in the council chambers.
Yes. Question then?
Councilwoman Hiller?
What I heard was that the, the transition actually happened not necessarily by plan on Monday, and that it's over. No?
Nope, nope. Mr. Plaid, say, bring your items in.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Ortiz? Nothing. Councilman Banks?
Thank you, mayor. Uh, just one announcement. We lost uh, the firefighters, lost a brother firefighter on Saturday morning. Uh, one of the oldest living firefighters uh, passed away at his home on uh, Saturday after our department, three days before, two days before, honored him. And having been there during the honor and at the time that he passed away, uh, I'll say to Chief Phillips, he was absolutely proud. And uh, this council, only a few of you know who I'm talking about. Uh, but uh, our fire chief uh, know that this was the gruffest old guy that you could ever come across. And I'm not a crying guy, but you know, he wouldn't, didn't have to, he was not a guy that was going to apologize for much of anything. And on Thursday, as he was sitting there and he was talking to me. And when I was younger, he used to tell me things that I should not do and things that, oh, you're making a bad decision. And he says to me, he looks at me, he says, "I don't have much air left." He said, "But there were things that I said to you I shouldn't have said." And I looked at his son and I said, "Is he apologizing?" But uh, you'd have to know him to understand what I just said to you. And I just wanted this body to know that, you know, he was really important to me. And before he passed away, he had little to almost no involvement or interaction with us uh, other than, you know, one or two people. And he asked me if I would be a pallbearer at his, at his funeral like the three days before, and I said, "Well, you're not dying." And he said, "Yes, I am." And I just wanted to share that with this body. Thank you, mayor.
Condolence is on the last of the prayer.
Thank you.
Okay, um, Councilman Cal?
Uh, just wanted to bring up, uh, this last week that we had state bowling for high school. Uh, Shawnee Heights uh, won the boys' state 5A. Uh, I put them in uh, to be recognized. Uh, this week, we have kids, uh, Kids Kids is Wrestling. That's a big event for the city of Topeka. Fills up a lot of our hotel rooms, a lot of our restaurants. Uh, so please be nice to all the people coming in from out of town and uh, know that it's going to be a busy weekend all throughout Topeka. And finally, last night, it was confirmed the greatest show on dirt is coming to Topeka. The uh, US Military War Dogs will be playing the Topeka Warhawks. Uh, the Warhawks are part of the Mid Plains League, which is a collegiate summer league, uh, where the college baseball players come from all, all over and play for an area team. Uh, the Warhawks are going into their second year. They play out at Hummer Sports Park. But it's uh, the War Dogs are a military team that I played for with last year. They are a veteran and active duty team. And we are traveling from Denver all the way to Boston, Massachusetts this year. We have several stops in Kansas, but I'm very excited that we got uh, Topeka on the list uh, to show off to, to my teammates what a great city Topeka is. And then to show off the Warhawks for Topeka itself, though that we have a team here. You don't need to travel to Kansas City or somewhere else if you go watch baseball. We have very good baseball here in town. Thank you.
I want to revisit uh, Councilman Miller.
Thank you, mayor. Um, I did make a promise to my daughter, who turns 18 today, um, to not embarrass her, so I just won't say her name, but happy birthday, baby girl. Um, this starts a string of three days that is very special every single year because my daughter's birthday is today, my wife's birthday is tomorrow, and my 40th birthday is on the 7th, so.
I can say her name for you.
No, please don't do that. I'm not trying to hear it. So thank you, mayor. Appreciate you, and happy birthday, Caitlin.
You know, we have, yeah. We have a tradition that we do at our church. Uh, every first Sunday of each month, after Mass is completed, the priests will ask all those who have a birthday in that month to remain standing. And the entire congregation gets to hear them serenaded for Las Mañanitas, and, and it's happy birthday. And they get to stand and everybody acknowledges their birthday for that month. It's a great thing to do, so uh, I can't sing Las Mañanitas for you because I don't have the voice for it. But happy birthday to you and everybody else in the month of March.
March birthday stands.
There you go. Happy birthday. Okay. I don't have any, I don't have anything to add. There is reason and cause for us to have two executive sessions this evening, if the city attorney will read.
Um, I believe the city manager would like to only have one, so if it's okay if we just have one executive session?
Oh, I think that's okay with everybody, yeah.
Happy birthday.
Uh, the motion would be to recess into an executive session for a period of time not to exceed 45 minutes for a preliminary discussion of the acquisition of real property for various purposes as justified by KSA 754319B6. The open meeting will resume in the city council chambers. The following staff may be necessary to assist the governing body in its deliberations, interim city manager, nine stat, and other staff he deems necessary.
Okay, you've heard the need for an executive session. Here's our motion. Move to go into the executive session second. I'll second it. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, okay. Okay, we will recess into the executive session. We will take a 10-minute break before we just start discussions.